Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome everyone to our January 17th. Well, our first meeting is going to be our Water, Waste Water Commissioners Meeting. And Peter Hutkins is here with me. Ariana is on Zoom attending. Lee Gustafson is going to be a couple of minutes late. And Heather is out for health reasons. Hopefully, she's feeling better soon. The first thing on the agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the Water or Waste Water Commissioners regarding something that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Bill?
Good evening, Bill Lindsay. A while back, I had asked or requested that the Board Water and Sewer Commissioners give some consideration to establishing a water and sewer rate that would be economically friendly. I know this is not the right time of the year. You have enough to do, but I would ask that you put it on an agenda sometime. The Board is the Water and Sewer Commission, so it could be a regular meeting as well rather than just having a Water and Sewer meeting. But I think it's something that we should advocate if we're going to try to promote economic growth. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. I remember writing that down in our notes, and I thought it was a good idea to have something a little separate for commercial usage. Any other citizens' comments? Anyone on Zoom? Next item is to approve the water budget. And Julie, could you take us through our water budget?
I can. Nothing has changed since your last, the last time you looked at this. All expenses for 2023 are reflected. Again, as I've stated a couple of times, you know, this looks as though you're deficit budgeting. You are. But the reason for that is we are gradually increasing rates. You didn't want to take that initial jump immediately. Thank you. You didn't want to take the initial jump in one fell swoop. So this plan increases revenue or increases fees over the next two years. As we discussed, that will gradually bring this to a zero. And during that time, you have talked about and you are going to be looking at alternative ways to build, as Bill was alluding to. So that's why this is showing a negative, as we've discussed previously.
So does the water fees on the 2024 budget, when they show an income of $336,000, is that reflecting the increase?
That's reflecting the increases for 2024. Correct. You'll see they went in 2023, they were $265,000, we're budgeting $336,000. 2025 will show an increase even further.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns about the Water Department budget for 2024? Going through this the last couple of meetings. Anything else seems in line? Need a motion on this?
The water, yeah, it's always helpful.
Doing together or doing separately?
I would do them separate.
Separate. So we need a motion to approve our 2024 Water Department budget with total expenditures being $388,285.94. So moved?
Second.
Peter's the motion, Ariana's the second. All those in favor of approving the budget? As stated, please say aye.
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 Aye. And Ariana? That was a yea-
Aye.
Okay. So there's three of us.
Yep.
I'm supposed to do a roll call when there's someone out on Zoom, but. Next one. And over to the Sewer Department budget.
Same, same thing. Nothing has changed budget-wise for 2024. 2023 actuals are updated. Again, same situation as with water. Sewer is not in as bad a shape as water is as far as its revenue over time. So this, but again, it is showing a sewer fund, you know, a negative budget of $8740, $8,740. Again, will be made up in the 2025 with the gradual increases. So we're not hitting everybody at once.
And both those, the Sewer and the Water Department, those have relatively healthy fund balances.
They do, correct. They do. So this carries us. Excuse me, it's not like we don't have the cash to sustain. We do.
So I have a question, because you, I was talking to Jeff today, and there's, is the grant work we did for investigating the sewer, is that, is that looking at projects too, or we're going to have to set some more money aside?
So that's looking at projects as well. Probably in, probably your second meeting in February, Naomi will be ready to come in and give a presentation on the lead line inventory as well as the wastewater asset management plan.
Yeah.
But the wastewater asset management plan does, like the water asset management plan, it sets forth projects.
Yep.
Prioritizes them.
Yep.
Gives estimated funding.
Yep.
Gives potential funding sources.
Okay, but that's all part of that grant?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Correct.
It's all like building, building blocks for future-
Oh, no, I understand the building blocks.
Yes, it's all in there.
Did we spend all the, you know?
It's all in there.
It's not another bill that's coming.
It's all in there.
Okay, thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to approve our Sewer Department 2024 budget with expenditures of $501,740. All right, so moved?
Second.
Peter's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the budget?
Aye.
For our Sewer Department? Go for it, Peter.
Aye.
Yes, and me, yes. All set. Okay. Let's get those two out of there. Entertain a motion to adjourn from our Water, Waste Water Commissioners meeting? So moved?
Second.
Peter's the motion, Ariana's the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 And aye. That was quick and smooth for a budget, huh? Okay, we'll go right into our Select Board meeting. First item on the agenda is any changes to the agenda? Any deletions or additions? Anybody have anything? No? Keep it all the way it is? Second item is to approve our minutes from our January 3rd Select Board meeting.
So Lee Gustafson, who's just walking in, had texted me a change. In the list of names of people in attendance, Jareen Slavinsky's name is spelled incorrectly, although it was corrected later. So there's that change. And then I noticed in the visitors present, it mentions Cortland Pennell. Cortland Pennell was not at the meeting. We talked, or somebody told me this, Cortland Pennell was not at the meeting. We mentioned his name in the meeting minutes, but he was not present. So his name should be removed from the visitors.
Yeah, we were expecting him, and I was informed, but I didn't see him.
Correct, he didn't come up.
I would entertain a motion to, well, first, anybody have any changes? Any other changes, corrections?
If you give me a second, I'll bring it up, but I don't think so.
Sure, no. Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll tell you my story about electric vehicles.
May I speak for a moment? On that attendance list, I believe there's, and I'll relook at it and email you, Julie, but I think there was somebody, BJ, someone, Fennel, or it was similar to Cortland's name. So if Cortland wasn't present, I probably omitted that name from the visitors list. And I'll double check that.
Okay.
All right.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I have no other edits than the one Julie mentioned.
About the spelling and then the Cortland. Anybody else have anything? Any other errors, omissions, changes, anything else on them? Somebody, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. So moved?
Second.
Please, the motion. Peter's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the Board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. Are there any citizens' comments? Is that our hand in front of Jareen, or?
No, it's the cursor.
It's our cursor. Thanks, Kat. It's gone. I'm actually trying to pay attention to the Board. Next item is old business. Julie, could you take us through our old business?
Yeah, there's not a whole lot. Everything is budgets, budgets and ten, right? But a couple of very quick things. To Peter's point earlier about wastewater and water projects. So I have submitted, or Naomi has submitted on my behalf, the applications for two things. Number one, it's to get our name on the priority list for Forsmay project, which will require a little bit more, but we're, she's kind of given the sign off that probably the asset management plan is going to be enough. Naomi did a little bit of extra work in that management plan to make it so we did not have to then go do another step. So that application has been submitted, does not, does not commit us to funding, but it gets us on that priority list. So that I'm hoping that we will be in the loop for the program that is opening up. That is, the first $250,000 is forgiven, second $250,000 of a project is 50% forgiven. And with that project being about a million and a half, that would be a big help. So that is, has been submitted, so we're on, we will be added to the priority list, hopefully. The second project is getting us ready for the secondary well. Those reports are almost done, and it's just getting us, again, on a priority list to identify that as a priority project for Chester. So those two applications have been submitted. Again, doesn't commit us to funding, doesn't commit us to anything, that will all come back to you when it's time, but they are both being added to the priority list for the state revolving loan fund. And then the other thing is Preston came in not long before the meeting. We have no answers. We literally just received this. It was a letter from Julian's attorney withdrawing their application. So again, like, every question that pops into your mind has popped into ours and is on the table. We have no answers. We have talked to nobody. We have to wrap our heads around, and Jim has to wrap his head around. Lots of different options, lots of different things this could mean, lots of different avenues the town could go down. So not much to say about it, other than we will, I will report back when we've heard from Jim and have formulated what our next legal strategy should be. But just, it's going to be out there, it's going to be public fast, so we wanted the Board to know ahead of the public, so.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
That's, that's-
Yeah. Lots of speculations to why, but it's all pure speculation, so.
We just got a whole bunch of information regarding the decision and their counter on it, and it was pages and pages long about what they thought or didn't think. And then the next letter comes and it's withdrawing evidence.
Correct.
I like the wording in there, that part of it was-
Want me to read it?
Part of it was because of the concern of the neighbors. And I thought that was, that was touching.
Do you want me to read the letter? Dear Chair, on behalf of Julian Brothers LLC, Allstone, I have been asked to withdraw the pending application for conditional use approval of its stone quarries in Chester, Vermont. Much of what was originally proposed is no longer part of the plans, and during this proceeding, it has heard and considered the comments of neighbors, which has caused it to rethink how it wishes to operate. It does not feel its plans have solidified sufficiently to continue pursuit of the pending application, so the application is being withdrawn. Please contact me with any questions, and this came from Mark Hall.
That's a head scratch.
So there you go. And then the other piece of business is-
So is the postmark? Never mind.
Yeah. The other piece of business is you guys had adopted the Unified Development Bylaws. Would you sign the warrant tonight? If you could also sign this, that would be great. Doesn't need a motion, right? You aren't different.
Anybody have anything else on old business? I got one quick thing that I know about a month or two ago, we were talking about getting 802 tree up to some of the CCC trails in town to clear out a view, especially on the Lost Mine Trail. And Peter Hutkins volunteered to head up there with a chainsaw on his back and took them up there. There was four of us. Peter did most of the work. John Russell also helped quite a bit with the clearing and the taking down of the trees. I kind of watched from at the top and didn't do much, and there was another gentleman too helping out with some of the smaller brush at top. But I just wanted to thank you, Pete, for what you did up there, because the view is fantastic all over again, with some of the, some of the honker trees you took down and stuff and everything. You could see a scutney, you could see up to the, it must be the presidential range up through there and stuff.
So that is on the Lost Mine?
Yeah.
Or on the Butternut? On the Lost Mine?
Lost Mine Trail. There's still two or three other ones, and he was volunteering, said, well, let's give it a little break here. Be careful what you volunteer for, but I just wanted to let people know what was going on.
Great.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Old business? No? Head on? Next item is our bi-monthly short-term rental discussion. You know, it's been a long process, but there's been a lot to digest and a lot to, you know, a lot of information to get. And the last draft that Preston, that you prepared for us, had even a little more than the one before it, because it started talking about zoning also with conditional use and stuff. And I was just wondering if you could just kind of take us through it one more time, especially with the other changes, with the added stuff that you have on there.
Yeah, I interpreted, it's funny, Arnie came after the last meeting and said, what exactly did we decide? And I said, I think you told me to come up and suggested wording for what some of these changes could be, so that we could actually see what they look like. And so I did my best to come up with eight different options. I had shared one with Arnie in the Planning Commission earlier that was seven, and it didn't have the conditional use review, but I decided to put that in also. I mean, they're just very, they're just possible language, very draft. But I was able to do searches of other short-term rental regulations around the country and come up with things that I could adapt for all of them. And I guess I'll just very quickly for, because, you know, people on Zoom can't see this, but the eight items that I came up with language for, one was a residency requirement, which is basically to say you can only do hosted short-term rentals. One was an operator's presence during the rental. This is something that's been kind of controversial in Burlington and in New York City, that not only do you have to be a resident, but you have to actually be there when they're renting. One that has a lot of appeal to some people is the waiting period of two years, that you can't start short-term renting a property until you've owned it for two years. But a big unanswered question is that some people, well, I should back up and say the concept of permits going with the land is common in zoning, but this is an ordinance. And so unless you say otherwise, the registration doesn't go with the land. So it could mean that even if somebody bought an existing short-term rental, that they would have to wait two years before they could rent it again. And that would be a question to decide. You can write in there and say, well, you know, existing short-term rentals are exempted. You could do that. Another one is a registration cap. When Peter had made a suggestion to me, he had said 4% of Chester's housing stock, which would be around 55 rentals. We have registered 56 already, but this is 55 rentals that are unhosted, I'm assuming. Again, a lot of assumptions here. Peter also had a concept of a density limit, and I did find the city of Seaside, California has a density limit. The, you know, I took some liberties here. It's kind of like a 55-foot exclusion zone in, you know, our denser districts, and then a 500 in our more rural districts. Could be anything, but that's the theory. And you say, where's, where did 55 come from? It's because road rights of ways are 50 feet, so it means you scoop up people that are across the road as being ones that are not eligible. There's the concept of an owner limit. I know when I worked in the town of Killington, it was pretty well-known that if you owned six or more rentals, you could pretty much make it a full-time job managing those rentals. We don't have those problems here yet, but I just pulled out of the air, no more than three rentals. I think we have a couple in town that have two, but no one is more than three. Prohibition on corporate ownership, that was kind of a funny little excursion. I have discovered that natural person is a term of art that's used in some zoning bylaws. And since a lot of natural persons do have various trusts through which they hold property, it basically says that ownership has to be either a natural person or a holding company investment vehicle or trust that's owned and operated for the benefit of a natural person. Keeps your, your Section C corporations and that kind of stuff out. And then finally, conditional use review is a little hard to get my head around. Woodstock does require conditional use review for short-term rentals. The problem, as I alluded to earlier, is that normally conditional use review is a one-time approval and the, and the permission goes with the land, the permit. So successive owners just can continue that use. So I kind of did a hybrid where you have to go through a one-time conditional use review, but you also have to go through an annual registration. Woodstock chose to deal with that by saying you go through a one-time annual review, and then you have to submit an annual report every year, which is kind of a nice idea, but they haven't been enforcing it, so then people aren't submitting their annual reports. And then there was an article in our local Vermont Standard saying, nobody's in compliance because no one's submitting their annual reports. But that was just that, I live in Woodstock, I can be frank about it. They had kind of a turnover in zoning staff, and I think a lot of balls got dropped. So then I also, the Planning Commission was curious to know about this, so we did discuss it, and they said, gee, it'd be really helpful if you wrote a memo about how easy or hard these would be to enforce. So I did, and I'm not going to go through that memo, but it's here. I got the wrong one. Anyway. But it's just sort of a rambling observations that you might find helpful. All, you know, I mean, I do say at the outset that, I'm actually not advocating for anything. I mean, personally, I would not be sad if you decided to make no changes. But I am feeling that it's my job to give you the options, and it's my job to carry out what you decide. And so there are certain ones that I think would be harder to enforce than others. But, and I also think that for some of them, it would be really, really key to keep our entire real estate realtor community very, very well-informed, because if they can head it off before people even buy properties, that's a whole lot better than if we see, you know, an ad come up on a short-term rental site and contact them and say, you can't do that. You know, they've already bought the property, they've already made the improvements, they've already put it on the site, and they're not going to be happy. You know, it's just, it's just common sense that they're going to feel pretty outraged, probably. And that does remind me that we have signed on with a new short-term rental provider called RentalScape, and we are, it's a one-year agreement, it's not too expensive, $6,500, and we'll try this go around again.
What was the price on that?
$6,500. But that's just for two services. One is scrubbing the internet and providing us reports, and the other is doing the 24-hour hotline. But we'll continue to process renewals for the time being ourselves.
Try it, try it for a year and see.
A lot of, here's the thing for us in Chester, we're, most people that are regularly, you know, tracking short-term rentals are, you know, doing 700, 800, 1,000, 1,200 rentals. We're doing 55, 56, 85, if you want to talk about all sites that show up, but some of them just don't. You know, they're, they're ends, or they're bed and breakfast, or they're, you know, don't qualify for one reason or another. So we, we just went with a small company that we're hoping is eager to get established, and will give us good service, and we'll find out. Part of what, there's two things that we lack right now. One is, we don't have good data about complaints, because we don't have the hotline available. And the hotline will be, you could either call in, or you can email in, you can be anonymous, and you can also attach phone videos or anything, you know, if you want to say, this is what it sounds like, this is what it looks like. The other thing is that although Granicus was providing us with scrubbings, which means, you know, going through the host sites, there's a, for compliance, you really want to have a deeper dig to see how often they're renting and how many people they're renting to. And so we weren't getting that. And so in other words, if we're saying, if we're approving people for eight occupants, we want to make sure that they're not saying, oh, yeah, sure, you know, but I'm going to rent the 20. And I mean, we want to, we want to see that data that their ad actually says eight occupants. And we weren't getting that from Granicus.
Preston, the fee that goes along with the registration, can you remind me what those numbers are again, please?
Right now, unhosted is, I'm sorry, hosted is $150. Unhosted, some people call non-hosted, are 300. And that generates us somewhere around, what, 12,000, I think?
12,400.
Yep.
So as I was reading through your memo, and I appreciate all the work you put into it, it seemed to me that we're in a situation where I don't think we have a problem yet. But on the other hand, I can see it maybe turning into a problem. And so what do we do about it? Because it seems like any of the options that you've laid out are unenforceable realistically. And so my question is, can we, if, if the intent is to show preference to hosted short-term rentals, people who actually live in Chester and stay in the homes and all that, leaving that fee at 150 bucks, but the unhosted rentals, crank it up to 3,000 or something and say, if you want to have an unhosted rental, short-term rental in town, I mean, is that, is that one way around this?
There's all kinds of ways around it. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that can be an option. I'm, it's not like it's somehow illegal to do that. I mean, that, that could be, that could be something.
Again, it seems, it seems like the data that has been collected, to me, indicates that it's not as dire a situation we thought it was going to be. We have some issues that I think we need to be concerned about, or at least think about how we're going to deal with it. But I, you know, it's not like we all need to be in a panic because our whole town's getting taken over.
I'm sure Kathy will be interested to speak after I do. My, my observation or my thoughts are that in the downtown districts like the Village Green and the, and the Village Center, as well as mixed use and that kind of stuff, they're pretty u- they're pretty used to commercial activities anyway. And in the rural districts, they're pretty spread out. So what it really means is that the Stone Village and the new, what we call neighborhood district, which used to be R20 and R40, those are the ones with the most concentration of houses and the ones that would probably feel the most like their neighborhood is changing if they have a lot of short-term rentals. I know that there are some people who feel pretty strongly that we shouldn't have one set of rules for one part of town and another set of rules for another, but I have kind of felt that those are the two neighborhoods where there is a level of risk, and in the other neighborhoods, I don't think it's at much of a risk.
Well, a lot of our zoning regulations go by neighborhood, and certain areas do have different regulations.
And that's been my counterargument, is that that's what zoning is all about, is that you set up certain areas with different rules because you have certain goals, and that's what it's about, and ordinance on short-term rentals can piggyback and just say, on those areas identified in our zoning bylaw, this is the rules under this ordinance. I mean, you can, you can say that.
I think a lot of what you were saying, Lou, I agree with, mostly not targeting, but unhosted is more of the concern than hosted, because when, when they're hosted, they're people that live in the village, they're responsible, they're here, they're a part of the community, and they're, they're allowed to kind of do what they want with their house, where when it's unhosted, it seems more like it crosses into the business end of it, as a part of like tourist housing and stuff, which is part of the conditional use part, where it starts talking about tourist housing and the same idea, and it would go under the same type of conditions that that would happen. And, and though, I agree with you, it's not, the urgency seems like it has quietened down a little bit, but the effect that it has had on certain neighborhoods and certain areas of town has already taken place. It's already happened, it's already changed certain small sectors and certain areas and certain neighborhoods from being strictly a residential or a second home area to being more of a commercial feeling, because every weekend, there's a different group there, it's popular, it's getting used a lot and stuff. So though it's not in our faces a lot, and it's not, really seems like it's making that big of an impact, it is impacting certain parts of the town and certain areas and stuff. I mean, we have a list of different options, and the first one is to do nothing and just keep our ordinance the way it is, and go from there. I, I know there was a big, not a consensus, but a lot of, yeah, it kind of was for a waiting period, that was one of them, and whether it was one year or two-year. And the other option of jacking up that fee, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea either. Maybe it doesn't have to be quite that extreme.
I was, I was making a point.
I don't know, from the budget perspective, I'd kind of like that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I want to make sure that whatever we do, if there's going to be, like, some of these have a lot more labor behind it to enforce it, which is time, which is money from the town, and I want to make sure that whatever we do, that it's not going to be negative cash flow for the town. I want it to be able to support itself, I would hope. And if it made a little extra money, well, that's okay too, just to, you know, to buffer what's happening, because some of these, as you explained later on, they do involve a lot more work and a lot more time, and I would hope that the fees would cover that and then some. And I, I agree with you there on that part.
Well, and that's what interests me about Preston's memo, was the enforceability of some of these, and, you know, what happens if somebody ignores the requirements? You know, what are we going to do about it? There's no, really no stick. So as far as I'm concerned, you make the stick up front, and then maybe that prevents some people who are prone to ignore, or don't have the same, I mean, they're not our neighbors, and so they don't have to look at somebody in the face every day and say, oh, I'm ignoring the rules, as somebody who may not have that same level of, I don't know, concern for the town, or, you know, being a good neighbor, whatever.
You know, the, the stick that we have is to write a municipal ticket and go to the municipal bureau, which is, what's amusing about that is municipal ticket's the same thing you get if you are speeding, and traffic court and the municipal bureau are the same thing. So that's, that's, that's the enforcement mechanism. A lot of, the experience of a lot of towns is that the traffic court judges aren't all that sympathetic to these and kind of aren't, you know, really eager to enforce them. Well, I guess they just make it, they don't make the process easy for the municipality. I haven't had a lot of experience at it. I, I am, I have my ticket book and I am registered, but I, I haven't actually ever gone to municipal court, or to judicial bureau is the correct name.
Hugh, Hugh Quinn, you have a question? Is that your hand up?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to make a comment about the, the concept of the neighborhood, and so what I'm going to be doing as a, as a citizen is advocate for some of the rural areas of town. So while I understand the housing density is higher in the Village Center and in the neighborhood parts of town, there are parts of the rural areas that are basically like little neighborhoods. In fact, I live in a subdivision of four houses, they're all pretty close together, and currently 50% of those houses in my subdivision are short-term rented. So you can also look at, you know, like the Maple Ridge area, so there are what I would consider neighborhoods in the rural areas. So I think it's a little unfair to say, once you get into the rural areas, everybody's so far apart, it doesn't matter. That may be true to some extent, but I think it's, it's also untrue in other, in other scenarios, so just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Hugh. Good point. Arianna, your hand up?
Yeah, I was just thinking about the, the exorbitant fee for unhosted versus hosted, and it just, while I like the idea, at that point, if someone's opening a business by buying a home, having an inflated fee is an irritant as opposed to a deterrent. If that, if they're going to buy a house to do this, they'll pay whatever the fee is, but all we've done is managed to irritate the people who are just trying to help themselves out on a weekend or two, even though it's unhosted. So I don't know if going to a, you know, 100% more money if you're going to do unhosted makes a lot of sense, I'm not sure, but I did want to say, Arnie, that I am a fan of the owner quantity limit, and if that was, if we're talking about that as a, you can't have three short-term rentals within Chester, as opposed to you can't have three at all, so that if someone had some sprinkled around Vermont, that would be different than the quantity in our town. There's one comment I wanted to check on. And I'm also a fan of the prohibition on corporate entities, therefore relying on natural persons. And I'm wondering, Preston or anyone, if they've heard anecdotally how that prohibition is working in other communities. Those were my thoughts. So the big one is, how does the prohibition against corporate ownership work?
So, I'll answer your first one and say that Chester can only regulate what happens within the boundaries of Chester, so if somebody wanted to have a short-term rental in Chester and then have two in Ludlow, that's just not our business. And so the answer is, it would just be, yeah, you couldn't have more than two or three or whatever we decide in Chester. You have a question about natural person? I, I can look some more. I only found this one example from the city of Portland, Maine, which, as it happens, it was a group of changes that ended up going down in referendum, so it's not actually in law. But I did find out, because I just was intrigued by this concept of a natural person, and I did look through, you know, online, you know, Blacks Law Dictionary and some other things, and found out that this is a known concept in contract law. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a, we'd have to, you know, obviously go to Jim Carroll, our attorney, and say, tell us what you think, but I mean, my impression is that this is not a completely novel concept, that this is something we could do. When it comes to enforcement, you know, I'm always sort of worrying about the guy or person, woman, whatever, who buys a property, thinking that surely I can do this, and then finds out after they've spent some money on it that they can't. I'm less concerned about offending Schedule C corporations. I mean, I think first of all, I'm inclined to think they would do their due diligence before they bought a property, and secondly, I don't cry a lot of crocodile tears if they end up finding out after the fact that they can't do what they thought they were going to do. So that one does not scare me so much about enforcement.
All right, I'd like to back up a second. Where are we going to put this, who has the responsibility for posting the number about short-term rentals, and where is it going to be that it's fairly easy to find?
Well, the town website, and perhaps, you know, articles in The Telegraph and The Journal. I'm not sure how else to get the word out, but it, it, it could be a number that's very prominent on the town website, perhaps even on the homepage, and just, just be a regular item that's there, that if you have any complaints about a short-term rental, this is the number to call, this is the email to contact.
I think what was brought up before regarding any type of regulations that we come up with, to make sure that the real estate community is well aware of them, and whether it takes a letter to all of them that says, well, here's what we're adopting, make sure that you're aware of it, make sure that anybody that's looking at property is aware of it also, so it doesn't come up after, after a sale, and I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't have a email group of all the Realtors that serve Chester, but I've been thinking that the time may be coming to do that, and, and again, since I was in real estate once myself, I can say, you don't just notify them once and say, okay, now they know, you have to kind of like remind them every six months, yeah, and, and keep your list up to date, because Realtors do come and go.
But there's, there's like board of real estate, you know, organizations and different...
No, you are right, there, and Kathy just said Crown Point is, I think, our local group, but yeah, there are, right, right. I mean, they're registered with, they're licensed by the state, and they, and they belong to an association. So yes, we should be able to figure that out.
So on the list, there's probably some things on this list that are not going to be considered at all. Do you want to maybe just go through this list and see if, you know, what, what comes out, or which ones we could just totally scratch and write off? I mean, the first one, the residency requirement, consensus would be no?
Yeah, I would, we have a lot of second homeowners, and that takes them right out. And that's a lot of unhosted people, so you would pretty much be eliminating, well, that would probably stop a lot of unhosted people, and there are probably a lot of people who have been doing it for quite a while.
It would basically stop all unhosted ones, it sounds like.
Well, can, can we back up just for a second?
Okay.
Before we go through this whole discussion, I guess I'd like to understand what the rest of the board thinks about, is this a problem? And do we, do we want to deal with unhosted and leave the hosted alone, or do we want to have some fingers in both of those pies? Because I, you know, we could talk about residency requirements, whatever, but if we're trying to eliminate all unhosted rent, short-term rentals, then yeah, that would be the way to go. I don't think that's going to work, because we already have a couple of lawsuits associated with that particular tactic, and so I don't see Chester as being on the cutting edge of that kind of lawsuit.
I, I don't think the consensus of the board was to get rid of all unhosted ones.
Okay, I, yeah, I just, I wanted to find out what you guys and Arianna thought.
Yeah, and it's hard, you know, what step did we take first? Because the question's still going to come down to a lot of this anyway, so I'm, I'm open for suggestions on how to go about this, or how to, how to go through the list, or do we want to do anything at all?
Can you give me your opinion on this?
On what I think should go on?
Well, as far as whether, whether we want to take a harder line on unhosted versus hosted, or we want to treat them both the same.
No, I definitely think that unhosted ones should be treated differently. From the beginning, I always thought that they're more of a business, whereas a hosted one was, like, a homeowner is allowed to have a whole business. In a lot of ways, it's kind of already approved in, in our bylaws and other ways, and state laws also. But soon as it's unhosted and the person doesn't live here, I always felt that it should be treated like a business. And, and for me, it was go through the whole process of conditional use.
Yeah.
I, maybe that's a little too extreme. I also believe that we should treat them differently, and I think the fee schedule should reflect that, maybe not quite as exorbitant, but it's okay that they pay a little more on the end of it.
I've been slapped enough on that.
Well, that happens quite a bit.
So what do you think, Peter? Hold on, hold on.
Arianna.
Arianna, well, all right. My opinion is that there's...
Excuse me, Peter, I can hear you, but can you pull your mic just a little closer, please? Thank you. Yeah, you may have the bad mic.
Okay, yep, all right. So I haven't said a lot lately, so you should be all set. My opinion is that a hosted rental is income for the locals, and I think it's, it's certainly a small business now, and you got to do what you can to help them. And some of the small business is actually taking care of the unhosted. So you, and the thing is, we talked about when we were putting this together, that we're going to have the complaint line, which we haven't heard, you know, it's just, that whole Granicus thing just imploded on itself, so it didn't get off to the best start in the world. But I also understand and listen to, to what, what Hugh has to say about the density. I think that, I, that I think is probably one of the, if you're in a neighborhood where you're the only people who live there all the time, that's just not going to work out well, you know, and so that's probably me, but so I would eliminate the first two. A registration cap, we haven't seen a horrendous change. You know, we haven't, the numbers have pretty much stayed the same for the last year, so I don't see anything really happening there.
So before you keep going down, I wanted to get Arianna's opinion on it.
Okay, next, all right.
Sorry. Because I, we are going to talk about this, but I just want to find out where everybody sits on the board.
And it's hard to, to separate the two, because it's always involved with what you think or don't think.
Arianna, go ahead.
Yeah, I did want to say, one of the things about this past few months is that I've learned a lot, a lot more than I understood when we first paused this. So I do think pausing to explore has been a good choice. What I've learned is that I feel that our ordinance is good. I feel pretty comfortable with that. I like the idea, and I think it's good for the community, for us to find a little bit of a filter, a little bit more of a filter, which is why I like the limit to the quantity of short-term rentals a person could own in Chester, that one's appealing to me. The prohibition on corporate ownership is appealing to me, but I have to agree with Peter that the hosted short-term rentals, I even find that appealing. So as far as treating them different, I absolutely think we should and can, and I think hosted short-term rentals, I have come to feel those are not a negative for our town, I kind of support the idea. Unhosted short-term rentals, I have to agree, it's not as terrifying as we thought it would be, could be, but I really wish there was a way we could go neighborhood by neighborhood. So I have yet to hear something that makes me ready to give up the idea of some kind of piece of the ordinance that limits the density of short-term rentals in some of our neighborhoods or communities. The idea of, you know, getting rid of all unhosted, no, I'm not for that. The idea of, you know, getting rid of all unhosted, no, I'm not for that. The idea of supporting some of our second homeowners, who are a part of our community, and they're doing this, I, I don't think we want to prohibit them from operating them either. So, that's my opinion at the moment, Lee. I, I like our ordinance, I think it's strong, I think we could tweak it a little bit. One of my thoughts going into this evening's meeting was the question of, however we come out of this, we have to remember it's an ordinance. It may be a different group of five select board members a year and a half, two, three years from now, and they might revise the ordinance we create. So, we're, we're creating guidance for now, until or unless it gets changed, is sort of my feeling. Was that, was that clear, Lee? Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, um, I was able to show you density in terms of these houses are being rented short-term. But I'm hoping with RentalScape, I can start showing you how often they're rented. So it's like a level of use. And that might, um, I'm not sure how far back they will go, but it might help us figure this out if, because I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, I hardly ever rent it." You know, the, a, a second homeowner says, "Well, I almost never do this, but once in a while I do." Well, this would, might give us a clearer idea of, um, are we looking at a neighborhood with a bunch of second homes, and once in a while there's a rental? Or are we looking at a neighborhood where there's people coming and going every week? And are there pockets where there's a lot of activity, and then other pockets where there isn't much? So I, I don't know if that will be helpful, but it might help us.
Actually, I was going to ask you about your pushpin map.
Yeah.
Because that would help me visualize where we have it, and, you know, maybe white for hardly ever, and red for all the time, and...
Right, yeah.
Different colored push, because that, that would be very helpful, in my opinion.
Yeah.
To see something like that.
Yeah. And the, I think the RentalScape, um, service will give us that information, in a way we can use easily.
There's going to be a complaint line with them also.
Mm-hmm.
That's what's going to come into, come into play also, which we don't have any access to. Hugh, do you have your hand up again?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make one last quick comment, because I'm, you know, listening to the conversation, and sort of one of the things I'm hearing is, there is some interest in, you know, giving posted short-term rentals, you know, we like those, and unhosted, while they're not running away in the town, you know, they're not, you know, they're not our favorite, if you will. And I've also heard, you know, we don't want to, you know, alienate or cause hardship to second homeowners, which I agree with, actually. And so, one of the reasons I think the waiting period at least, you know, require, you know, merits a little, another look, because if you're an existing homeowner, and you have a short-term, uh, rental, um, registration, you're fine. The only time the waiting period would come into effect, the home is sold. And my argument is, if somebody can afford a second home, they can afford to wait two years to rent that second home. So I don't view folks that can afford a second home as needing to short-term rent it, or else they'll be in some sort of a hardship situation. Uh, I'm not really, I don't really think that's the case. If somebody has to short-term rent those, their second home, so they can afford to buy it, then maybe they, maybe they really can't afford to buy it.
Thanks, Hugh.
Yep.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Who, who's speaking?
It's Sue Bailey. Sorry. Would it apply to, um, if someone bought a house and they were going to live in it? Would, if there was a waiting period enacted, a two-year waiting period, would that apply to them, because it would be hosted?
I don't believe so, the way it sounds like the board is going to think.
Okay.
As far as if it's hosted, then it's a whole different ballgame, and it seems like we're almost want to encourage hosted, uh, short-term rentals. Want to go down the list? Kathy?
Kathy Gurtino. First, I think that this work has been, you did a great job here, um, putting all this together. I love the $3,000 sign-off, I think that's a great idea. I think that, um, if someone's going to buy a piece of property, and then they want to turn it into a short-term rental, and they say, "Oh, I can't do it," and then they get upset, buyer beware. If they're buying a place and they're going to make it a short-term rental, then it's their business to investigate the rules in the town before they do it. If I buy a property and decide to turn it into a strip joint in the middle of a neighborhood, and find out I can't, it was my own fault for not doing my homework. So... Pardon? So, so I, I think, I think that, you know, let the Realtors know, put it in our public, local publications, but after that, it's their job to figure out what's available in our town. As far as the cap goes, you're right, right now it seems to level off. But if there is a cap, then that prevents a problem later on. If you, it's a lot easier to say, "No, you can't have it," than it is to take it away. So, I mean, that's just a thought. And I also have a question, if there's problem properties, let's say they pass all the hurdles, and it seems like every time they have people there, it's five, eight, 10 cars, parties till 2:00 in the morning, and the neighbors complain, is there some protection that they lose their right to have a short-term rental, because it's creating an issue for the neighborhood? I think that needs to be considered at some point. I also am curious about Granicus. You know, we paid them a lot of money. Did they give us a refund at all? We got nothing from them.
We, we did get some things from them. We only paid them 50%. We never paid any more than that.
How much was 50%, though? It was quite a bit, wasn't it? It was like $7,000 or something?
It was like $7,000.
Yeah. And did we get $7,000 worth of anything from them?
It took a while to get the information, but they did provide us with, uh, basically the list of the short-term rentals in the area, and I believe there was...
Well, I'm glad we aren't with them anymore, because they, they...
I, I can also tell you that I, that I have had a couple of towns call me for a reference.
Oh.
So we're getting some back that way.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, no, I, I just think this is really great work, I appreciate it very much. And, um, you know, I think that whatever we do, it's the best we can do, and see where it goes. But, but I do think that there should be some consideration for, if you have a problem house, can it continue to go forward?
76, we paid 7,600.
Yeah. That, that is all in the court, the current ordinance.
Oh, it is a new ordinance.
It is a new ordinance with a fine schedule, and I'm, well, Preston...
I guess it would be a non-renewal the next year?
Um, it's, it's funny, because I'm the primary author of it, and I can't quite remember, but yes, there is a fine thing, but, but certainly if we don't have it in there, uh, I have seen ordinances with wording saying that after a certain number of complaints, you are ineligible to get a registration for a year, or two years, or something like that.
I thought there was some revocation language.
Yeah. We'll have to look at it.
It's like after the third fine, and it's just done.
There was something, I feel like, there was something to revoke a permit.
Scott McDonald, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I do, thank you, Arnie. I just have a, a quick question. There's been so much talk, it's hard for me to remember everything and to know what's come, thinking, but the proposed waiting period, um, for a homeowner to have a short-term rental, does that include, um, doing, uh, an Airbnb-type thing as well?
When you say Airbnb, I basically, it's the same thing as a short-term rental, but...
That's what I thought, okay, so...
Yeah, there's a distinction, I think, of as hosted or unhosted.
Does the, um, does that waiting period come into play if somebody is moving here and buying a home, planning on living there full-time, and doing a short-term rental to help their income? Do they still have to wait?
I don't believe, because it's hosted, in this case, you're saying, they're coming here, they're buying the house, they're living in it, and they're going to rent a part of it?
Yes.
That would be a, a hosted one, and we're definitely encouraging that, if anything.
So, the waiting period is only for unhosted?
I believe so, correct, if that's, that's...
Okay, that, that's what I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Yep. I will, Scott, just because you asked the question, say that I've gotten multiple calls from people that say, you know, "I hope to retire to Chester someday, but, you know, a way that I can afford to buy the house now is to short-term rent it." And that's still unhosted. But, uh, I mean, that's, yeah, that's unhosted. But if somebody actually moves to town, then...
They're hosted.
Yeah. And why?
You know, uh, Preston, there was something you and I were chatting about earlier, um, and this is just another passing thought, about the, the term hosted. You could have somebody, uh, who lives out of state, even potentially out of country, who buys a property, and then has somebody behave, uh, basically being an employee, just living there. It could be a, a young person who just gets room and board, um, to live there. Uh, that is another definition of hosted. So, that's the kind of thing that people will probably, you know, people who are hungry to make an awful lot of money, and come into our community, that might be a workaround for them to still have a hosted rental, when it isn't actually a healthy part of the community, or somebody who's really living here. So, I just thought I'd bring that up in case it hadn't been thought of.
Yeah, and, you know, it's funny how, depending on what terminology you use, it can sound good or it can sound bad. If you sort of say an employee lives in the property, it kind of sounds bad. But the reality is that many, many properties have tenants, and the tenants can actually do short-term rentals, and that's what our bylaw says, is that, and, you know, those tenants are residents of the town, voters. I mean, they live here. And so, I think, uh, that's why I would kind of encourage that you not say that hosted only applies to the owner of the property.
All right, and, and I understand that. And I'm not really sure how I feel about any of this stuff, but, uh, if people's concerns are about preserving a functioning, working community full of citizens who live here, and that we don't wind up kind of like Ludlow, where suddenly there's, I mean, you have a town right up the road who lost their high school, because there weren't any kids. So, there's people on both sides of the fence. And I, whatever you guys do is, is obviously what you do, but, um, that term hosted is kind of a vague word. And I, I, I would just ask that, when you iron out all of this, that you perhaps consider making it as clear as possible, and, and you're, you're obviously not going to ever be able to make everybody happy. Uh, but, I, I have been getting postcards from corporations telling me how much money I can make, if I just let them have my house. And, um, one of them even suggested to me that they have employees who could be here. And I was thinking, wow, that could definitely get out of control in a community if, uh, because greed is a very powerful thing. So, uh, you, you were talking about corporate, well, you know, having an employee who's basically staying somewhere for free to have housing, um, in a rental where you have young couples who might not be able to afford a home anymore, uh, I would just caution everybody that we, you, you slice away that layer by layer by layer, until the community is completely different. And, uh, and then you, your, your hands are tied, because we also should be able to do whatever we want with the property we own. So it's, it's, it's got to be a tough thing for you guys. But, I, uh, I personally would hate to see somebody who doesn't live here, or a company live, uh, buy a property, and then have some young person who's just going to be staying there as an employee, that, I think that diminishes our community. That's just me.
I'm on the...
Okay, so thank you, I've got a teenager here who's talking, so I'm going to turn off my microphone now.
Thank you, Scott. Where would the board like to go with this?
Well, you want to go down the list, like you started 20 minutes ago?
So, the residency requirement, I think that we're, that one's booted.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, yeah.
Operator present during rental. Well, that's just basically the definition of hosted.
I, I think that speaks to what Scott was just describing. So, operator present during rental. Um, I don't need to go on for a long time, but I do think, if we spend a, a lot of time trying to determine our opinion of what counts as hosted or doesn't hosted, then that's not the point. We're trying to create some boundaries, some guidelines, some rules. Either it's hosted or it's not. If there's someone there, it does address our safety concerns. If there's someone there, it does address someone who is part of the community. Um, so I would step away from really trying to heavily define what it, who can be the host in a hosted. Either it is or it isn't.
Agreed, on the rest of the board? Consensus, yeah?
Yeah.
So it's scratched out? Waiting period. When you first buy a place, and it doesn't have to be two years, it could be a year, but how does everybody feel about a waiting period?
So you skipped the density limit?
No, it's... Depends on which list you're looking at.
I'm looking at the 117 draft.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm looking at Preston's notes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's two.
Right. Okay, sorry, I'll try to keep up.
Okay, well, there. In the, in the waiting period, I would just change that to unhosted, because right now it's, it's a waiting period. I'm in favor of this, but it's, the waiting period, it doesn't specify that it's unhosted. And if somebody came and was living in town, and they were doing a hosted, short-term rental, I don't think they should have a waiting period. And I, at this point here, looking at the things that I've read, uh, a lot of, the places that seem to be doing this lean more toward one year. So...
Unhosted, one year, two years?
Un, unhosted.
I find that very appealing. A one-year waiting period for unhosted feels really good.
Yeah? Yeah, okay. One-year unhosted. Registration cap, right now we have 55. Uh, do we want a cap? Do we think it'll be productive? Because one advantage of maybe having a cap, that if a, a surge does come, when it hits the cap, we'd be notified of it, and then we could either change it, or see what's happening, and give us a little time to adjust to it? Or no cap?
Well, I, to Kathy's point, I think it's always easier to add something than to try to take it away. So if we put the cap in place, and we find out in six months or a year that it's too small of a number, we can always increase it. But if all of a sudden we get, you know, the number's too high, and we want to take it back, that's very, very difficult. So, I would be in, in favor of a registration cap, and I would make it not much higher than what we have on the books right now.
60?
That's what I was thinking.
Peter?
Uh, I have no idea how you get to the 4%, because when I was talking to Kathy about, you know, of what is the housing stock, pretty much the one thing that we know is how many kitchens, and that's about it.
That's a, a good indicator, it might not be precise, because I, I can imagine there's places with two kitchens, but...
And that's, I mean, I don't know, somehow you have to figure out how to get, how to get a number.
So why is 4% a magic number?
Well, it's it, because the only thing that the listener database shows, I think, is just kitchens.
The only really useful, reliable...
Kathy, you got to get up to the mic when you're talking, oh, sorry.
Uh, this is Kathy, and the, as far as I can tell, the most reliable way to get a count of dwelling units is count the kitchens.
And, and it doesn't have to be a percentage, I mean, we could just use that number, 60.
Oh, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Because we know we're at 55, so that'll give us five more, and then a break to see what's happening.
I, I want to make that very point. I put that in there because it did come up in last, the last discussion, but it, you know, to pull a number 55, 60, that, you don't have to have a percent, yeah.
Let's make it 57, just to be weird.
Arianna, what do you feel about the registration cap at 60?
You're muted.
I could be okay with it.
Peter, you okay with it?
Yep.
Now, that's number of all of them, or is it, oh, just unhosted? Now, that's number of all of them or is it oh, just unhosted or hosted?
That one I did say at the bottom that hosted is not subject to the registration cap. So since we have, I didn't bring my numbers with me, since we've got 56 registered now, that means that the unhosted is 35, 40, so I mean, there's still plenty of room for growth if we pick 60. Which means it could be, 60 could be lower.
So maybe we should figure out what those numbers are.
Yeah, and I can come back at a future meeting with that, yeah.
We'll do a cap, but let's figure out.
Fifty-seven.
The other thing I'm concerned about is there were a number of people who said, well, I do, yes, I do rent, but I do it fewer than 14 days a year. I'm looking forward to be able to check their claim under Rentalscape and, and get some clarity about are there really that many people who don't rent that often?
Well, it'd be interesting because if it turns out they do and they, we hit a cap, they had a chance to get on board before with the right information, in which case if that was provided, it would have been easier. But let's get some numbers on hosted and unhosted and then we could figure out what the caps were gonna do. We should probably not have a cap on unhosted, I mean hosted, and then just do a cap for unhosted. I would think if that's what we're trying to encourage and do.
Kathy, did you have a? Okay, I thought you had your hand up, sorry.
Density limit. That's a little harder, that one. It's, and I understand the concern when you live in a small neighborhood, whether it's in the village or whether, whether it's in the outskirts. It's a little tougher to enforce for sure because you're, now you're talking about boundary lines and measurements and other things that are, I would think that under the description of enforcement on this one, it would be a little more labor intensive when it came to try and enforce a density limit. What's the rest of the, the board's view on density limit?
Well, I'm the one who put it together and I put it together because I was thinking of the Stone Village and then I'm also thinking of the outboard rule because the thing is we have, we have some funny places that there's concentrations of housing. And it's a lot of concentration of second homes and, and where Hugh lives is an example of that. You know, where it's, it's, there are four houses on a single private road and it just gets to be kind of an issue. I thought about the 500 foot and that was more, it just gave it a little more spacing in the rural districts. And that was, that was my thought because it is, we've had people from the rural districts have complained about them. And this was about the only way that I could figure to do it.
So is that 500 feet from the property line or from the house?
500 feet from the property line or the house? I'd have to look at the example because I played through it a couple of times when I came up with that, but I didn't save any of the examples that I used.
Because I'm thinking of where my house is, you know, I'm in the middle of nowhere. And my house is way farther away from my neighbors than 500 feet, but the property line, I mean, if I had a short-term rental and it was the property line and my neighbor couldn't, even though their house is a quarter mile away. So I'm just wondering what that detail would be.
You raise a good point. The example I wrote here is from property line, but that's because I was following some language that I saw. It could certainly be from the building because you're right. I mean, you could be, if you own a large property, you could be very far from your neighbor and your property line isn't that far from your neighbor and that could seem unfair. So we could do it that way.
Primary residence from the primary.
I know that just, just as a comparison that the distance that, you know, marijuana dispensaries have to be from schools is from the building, not the property line, so, well, the building of the dispensary from the school boundary, I think, but you know, anyway. I could, I could figure that out.
Yeah, actually, that's not true.
You think that isn't true? All right.
There's an intervening property law that, so, yeah.
All right, well, we'll, we'll scratch that. We'll just say we can work this out.
A situation that I'm thinking of is in the Stone Village right now, the Waters' house will probably become short-term. We don't know. It's there. They want to retire here. They're in their 30s, so they're gonna be weakening for a long time. Then there's the Grossman's house and they live there and then the Curran's house and they're, they've moved away because of ill health and they're not coming back. So I don't know how this works in feet, but the Grossmans could find themselves between two empty houses. So I mean, what protection do they have not have a neighbor on either side of them if both houses go to short-term rental? So I mean, I don't know that there's any way to, to do that. And personally, I'm for two years delay, not one. That's just my opinion.
All right, thanks, Scott. Want to leave density alone for a sec until we get a little more information on it?
Yeah, I think so.
Owner limit.
Just wanted to make a comment before we move on. So Preston, you'd say in a lot of these that how difficult it might be to enforce this particular rule or whatever. You say often that I don't think it'll be a message that's well-received, angry people will defy rules. And you're right, they will, and that's why I'm concerned about how we're actually gonna enforce this. You know, we can make all these rules that we want, but if we don't have a way to enforce it, then it's useless. So I, I think that's gonna, excuse me, gonna be the next question that we have to answer is regardless of what we put in place, is gonna have to be some teeth associated with it.
There is a legal process for enforcing town ordinances, like he was mentioning about the ticket venue and how that works. Now, whether it's paid or not, I think there's ways to enforce it, but it, it eventually involves legal fees and attorneys and stuff maybe also. So you start considering that and whether you want to enforce it or not.
Well, exactly, and that's my point is how much liability is the town gonna be in for to try to enforce these rules? And so, you know, just keeping, I'm keeping that in the back of my head as we're talking about these things about, okay, if we do a registration cap and we get to 57, then, you know, how are we gonna, I mean, it's easy for us to say, no, you can't. But if somebody's gonna rent their house regardless, then what do we do? And we don't need to answer that right now, but.
No, but you're right. Having the answer to that probably is very important on what we're gonna do to see exactly how that enforcement end of it works, so we know what the options are and exactly how it's gonna go. So we don't, we don't throw our hands up now here from now trying to enforce it and say that we didn't really look into it. It's a good point.
This is Kathy Hasbrook. One thing I, I didn't think much of at first, but there are short-term rental associations from our short-term rentals vista. I think the town would be well-advised to form an alliance with them because they don't want their members to be having wild parties and, and creating trouble. So they, they self-police or they are talking about self-policing. And I, at first I was not at all interested in paying any attention to the association, but I think it might be a way for us to manage the situation better and form an alliance with them. I've heard, but I don't know if this is true, that if somebody who's using like Airbnb to advertise and they get enough complaints, Airbnb won't let them advertise anymore, which is economic death to the, you know, they'd be reduced to, what is it called? Somebody's list, the list.
Craigslist.
Craigslist, yeah. So there are some ways that are not about laws that we can also manage the situation and influence it at least, so. I'm not sure how we would get, I think Polly Montgomery was.
She was part of that.
Excited about that, yeah.
She's the one that brought it up at the meeting that night then.
Aren't they the ones that are suing the city of Burlington?
They could very well be.
So I'm, I'm wondering how that works. Because if the city of Burlington wants to put something in place and then they get turned around and sued by the very people who are supposed to be policing themselves.
None at all, that's why. They basically, Burlington said basically, we don't want any.
Well, I, I'm just saying, I, I think, not that I disagree with what you're saying, but I think we need to be very careful who we put to bed with.
But I, I don't think we should ignore them and I, we might be able to
Yeah, but.
make some progress together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hugh, do you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment with respect to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, it's not about compliance, you know, or enforcement.
Yep.
So I think it's true, some things can be difficult to enforce, but in my opinion, that shouldn't really prevent you from creating, you know, reasonable boundaries within your ordinance because my, my feeling is you should assume that largely if people understand the rules, they will mostly comply. There will be bad actors who will not comply and you'll have to figure out how to deal with those, but I wouldn't let that be a reason not to create the regulation because by not creating it, even the people that would have complied won't have to because the regulations don't exist.
Thank you, Hugh. Good point. We were at owner limit, I believe. Three.
I don't see why two is.
Two?
I mean, to me, and this would be unhosted, correct?
Yeah.
So if you own a building and you live in it and are renting it, then that doesn't count toward the limit of two, so theoretically you could have three.
Still have two more.
Yeah. Yeah, and to Peter's point, I think, was that unhosted, short-term rentals generates a lot of business for a lot of people in town. Cleaning, shoveling, firework, you know, handyman stuff, whatever. And so I don't want to necessarily wipe them all out, but on the other hand, I think a, a limit of two is not unrealistic or unreasonable.
And a lot of this could be looked at again if we see a need to in the future, if something comes up that it should be changed for whatever reason. It's doable. It's not set in stone. I mean, it is an ordinance, which is, we allow for changes on it over time. Like something mentioned before, we can have a different select board five years from now that just tosses the whole thing out. Prohibition of corporate ownership, only real people, natural people.
I, I'm with Preston on this one.
It really is an intriguing concept and, and so, you know, I think, yeah, we spring it on Jim Carroll and see what he says.
Ariana, you okay? And Peter, you okay with it?
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I think the ownership limit would only really work if we also couple it with natural person because otherwise people can play the shell game of, you know, shadow corpse within shadow corpse within, you know, and, and we'd never, we'd be chasing our tail to try to figure them out. But if you do the two together, it's only natural people and it's only two for a natural person, then yeah, I mean, I think that, that doesn't scare me.
And the last thing on the list is the conditional use review. The impression I get is that we're gonna be staying away from this one for a while and just dealing with the ordinance.
I, I would agree with that because I think, as I think Preston pointed this out, is if you meet all the conditions, you're in. So I, I'm not seeing that as much of a stick.
Well, the thing about conditional use review, for instance, once you give a conditional use review, you can't just pull it back.
And that does go with the land.
And that does go with the land. So if you had a problem with somebody who had a short-term rental, to actually say, well, you have a conditional use, you're gonna take it back would be nigh impossible. The winners there would all be the lawyers.
So we'll go with what we decided. We'll leave that out for now, for good. And we're gonna end up with a waiting period, a registration cap. We're gonna look into the density limit just to see how that would work, an owner limit and a prohibition of corporate ownership. Basically, kind of a synopsis of what we're thinking. Density limit will be interesting to see how that's gonna work because we talked about from the primary residents with boundary lines as opposed to the boundary line and which areas are, I get the 55-foot zone and which areas would get a 500-foot zone or maybe there's something in between also. That one's gonna take a little more work, a little more figuring because of the application on it and how it would work and where. But the other ones seem like a pretty straightforward, I would hope. No, maybe? Preston, how do you think about that?
Wow, anyway, yeah, well, okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
What do you want the next directive to be?
The next what?
What do you, what is our directive? Is, do you want to see a revised draft of the ordinance with this language? Do you want me to send these concepts to Jim and get his feedback? What, what do you want your next?
Well, I guess my question is how much time is it gonna take to put it into the draft ordinance and then send that to Jim rather than here's what we're thinking of doing? I don't know. Does that make sense?
It does to me. Why don't Preston and I look at that?
I mean, I am thinking that we're, the density limits, not so sure about that, but the others would be fairly easy for us, Julie and me, to insert it into our current document and then send it to Jim Carroll and say, what do you think? You know, that kind of thing.
We'll send the other four next.
But I'll, I'll do a little more digging on density limit and just see if we can. Yeah, try to come up with something that works.
I can't remember how I played with the number because I used the Lister page and then I was working from that.
Yeah.
And the Lister page in Google to kind of identify residences and push it out.
Yeah.
And the, the four, even without density, the four you added are gonna make an impact.
Preston, thanks for all the work on this. I know this has been consuming quite a bit of your time and there's a lot to it.
Well, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I had suggested somewhat tongue-in-cheek of raising the fee for the unhosted. Does that have any merit?
I'm okay with it.
I mean, not to 3,000, but 2,900.
I'll try to spit this out. Right now, the pitch for $300 for unhosted is to basically say that's roughly one night's rental. So when somebody says $300, you're like, roughly one night's rental. I mean, I think here in Chester, the average one-night rental's a little under 300. It's kind of like 275 or something like that. It is fairly common around the country for people to say that the registration fee should be equivalent to two nights rental, which gets you up into the 5, $600 range, so. You could, we could certainly do that without people saying that's ridiculous and that's unreasonable. But, you know, something to think about.
Well, I guess one of the reasons why I bring it up is it is gonna cost the town money to hire you, Preston, to enforce this stuff.
Yeah, there's, you know, I started out saying we'll try to make this revenue neutral. In reality, of course, I mean, Julie and I haven't run the numbers, but Kathy and I have put a lot of time into this. And, and even when, even if Rentalscape works out as well as we hope, we're still gonna put a lot of time into it, so. No, the, the taxpayers are paying part of the bill and that's another reason to just say, you know what? Here we are regulating, you know, an activity that people are making money, they can pay more. The other thing is that many jurisdictions throughout the country, they can also get a business tax, but unless we chose to implement, you know, I forget the name, but the 1% or 2% sales tax. Yeah, local option, that's not open to us. And right now, even with the short-term rentals, I think. Yeah, local option, um, that's not open to us. And right now, even with the short-term rentals, I think our feeling is the local option doesn't generate enough to really make it worthwhile.
We may be circling back.
We may start thinking, changing our mind on that, yeah.
Well, the problem with the local option is it affects all the businesses in town, doesn't it? Which is, it makes it harder for locals.
As I understand, the local option can be just rooms and meals, which affects all businesses, or it can include sales. I know, living as I do in Woodstock, when they passed their local option tax, part of the deal was that a certain percentage of that money would go towards promotion of the community, which was part of the selling point, because people felt, well, you know, if I have to charge two bucks more for a room or a hamburger, I get a little bit back, because they're advertising Woodstock and Yankee Magazine and New York Times travel section and things like that, Conti Nast, whatever.
I would be okay with two nights for, uh, unhoseded.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're going to be rewriting and putting that in there to help with the expenses.
Two nights is, what's the lucky number?
600.
600.
I think 600, yeah.
Okay. 599.95, if you do it tonight.
It will be 600.
Any other comments or questions before we move on? I'd just like to reiterate, thank you again, Kathy, for the planning commission and all the work that's been done on this. I know it's, there's a lot. Hopefully, once it's all settled and it's passed, it'll, it won't take up as much of your time as it is now. Next item on our agenda is to review the draft town warning. So usually, we read through this?
I don't think you need to, Arnie. I mean, articles, no, I mean, articles five through 18, or five through 19, but it's got a numbering issue.
Right.
Eighteen, no, it was two eighteen.
Yeah, exactly, it's got a numbering issue. Um, all of those articles are, you, oh, I have a whole nu- yeah, the whole numbering issue is an issue, I'm seeing this. I got an issue. I got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, so I got to renumber. Um, but articles five through, uh, whatever the last one is.
Yeah.
Um,
Those are all petition, correct?
You don't have a choice to put them on, anyway, so there's no point in reading them.
Yep.
Um, really, the two for you to, to confirm, and you're going to do this technically not tonight, anyway.
Yep.
Um, are the two articles that will be bond votes. The first one being 380,000, that is for the matched degree mountain turnpike, and pay, and the match in paving Andover Road. Because we received the two-for-one money, uh, we received that grant, so it would be paving Andover Road. And then the second article is 565,000. Again, I'm putting this for this bond, because bonds are getting much lower interest rates than the bank. So it's definitely worth doing a bond on it, and that is your dump truck, your chipper, and your ambulance. So those are the only two special articles this year.
Any questions or concerns on those articles?
So they're not going to be the same bond, because you get, the ambulance is running out longer, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, they're not going to be the same bond, because the ambulance is running out for 10 years as opposed to five?
They're in the same bond, but there's two, two different financing terms within the bond.
Within the bond, okay.
Yeah, but it's actually one, it's actually one bond, but the bond can have multiple terms.
Multiple terms?
Yeah.
And what's the, what's the rate you're seeing right now?
Uh, just a little over 2%. Yeah, so it's definitely worth doing the bond. Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's amazing.
Exactly. And, you know, and, and when the time comes to do this, I mean, the bonds don't sell until, uh, June, usually. Um, we'll check the bank at that time and see what their interest rates are, and see what the bond's interest rates are. But if we want, if we want the option of using the bond, then it has to be an article.
Has to be voted, yep, yeah, I understand.
Well, it has, it says bonds or.
Correct, right, but if you're not.
So you could use either one.
Right, you, but, but if you're not going to use a bond, and you're just going to do a regular borrowing, you don't have to have it as an article on your town warning.
So this just gives us the option.
This is just giving us the options, correct?
So this, these are all voted at the town meeting from the floor, correct?
No, Article 2 and 3 are Australian ballot votes.
Okay, can we add a footnote to these, then? Basically explaining what you just said, about the reason we're doing a bond is because the interest rates are much lower, blah, blah, blah. Because my thought is, the average taxpayer, who's not paying attention, is going to see this, say, well, what do we need a bond for? What do we need this new equipment for, whatever, but if you, if we say, we've got to buy this equipment, and we're paying a much lower rate using a bond rather than some other method? Does that make sense?
A lot of times, we were doing.
It can, but it's going to get printed on ballots.
Well, the, the thing is, it's not so much that, it's a lot of times, we were doing these from a floor vote. We would do a truck, because you were borrowing the money.
Correct, because we would, right, you can use short-term financing.
See, that's almost, that's, as, so what we're saying, because it's cheaper, the other thing is that.
More people are looking at it, correct.
Right.
Yes, I will try to figure out a way to add a short note that doesn't.
Yeah, and.
That doesn't make the article complex. One thing that we have found over the years, is if an article on a ballot is too long, people don't read it.
Right, well, could you, do we divu- can we divide these up?
It's all under the same bond?
Well, we could.
Well, they are kind of divided up, because one is, one is the roadwork and the other one is the equipment.
Right, but again, like Julie said.
One for truck, one for ambulance, one for.
Yeah, we're, we're buying a truck, a chipper, an ambulance, and whatever else is in there, and, like you said, people aren't going to read it.
No, we put the truck and the chipper in one, and the ambulance is in, in another.
Yeah.
Divide it that way. Do highway versus, yeah, we could.
That, that way, and if we have the note, you know, an asterisk or footnote number one at the bottom, it hits all the same note.
Yeah, we could do that, sure.
I'm just trying to, just trying to make it easier for the taxpayer to understand
Yep, understood.
why we're making this decision.
Yep, agreed. Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So a bond vote has to be Australian ballot?
Yes. Yes, bond vote has to be Australian ballot. Yep. And it has certain noticing requirements, publication requirements.
Oh, I understand.
Very different than a vote from the floor. But, the converse is, if we don't, and we just vote it from the floor, how we normally do, then I'm not eligible to apply for a bond.
I, oh, I understand that, but I think it's really easy to say no on an Australian ballot, where it isn't as easy to say no when you're in person.
You're absolutely correct.
Usually, usually we've had.
However, you also have a much higher population of voters, so.
And usually with, with bond issues like this, over the years, it's been pretty receptive from the townspeople, they realize that these are purchases that we're paying off of on, on long-term, and it's not frivolous equipment, it's equipment that we need, that's replacing things that we've already have. So, there's usually some comments about it, but it's usually pretty well-received.
Well, yeah, I think that's the, this is all replacement equipment here. That's, that's actually a pretty good term, that you're not, we're not adding.
We're not buying new, yeah.
We're not buying new, we're replacing existing.
So, and these are all published in the, in the report, town report.
These are all published in the town report, my manager's report will talk about this, my budget report will talk about this. But not everybody reads a town report, and not everybody comes to town meeting to hear my explanation of the bond articles, so.
Okay.
It's there.
But I will see if I can be, think about some creative way, maybe there's something on the ballot, we could say, you know, the following articles are presented for replacement equipment only, you know, um, using bond funds, because interest rates are something, I mean, maybe I can just.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the two articles, and then, yeah, I, we talked to Debbie about that, about.
If you put a QR code on there, then a younger set will.
Will read it, and that one is, yeah.
And it shows up on their phone, it must be true.
That's right.
Any other questions or concerns about the, uh,
My only other question for you guys on this is, um, so you can sign it, you need to sign it sometime between Friday and Wednesday. So you need to hold this at another meeting, and you didn't decide yet when that meeting would be.
Friday and Wednesday.
We can sign it, next Wednesday is the latest?
Yes. Friday is the earliest, Wednesday is the latest.
What's, what's the timetable works for everybody?
You could also do a morning, I mean, in the past, you've done a morning one, too, where you just, so whatever you want to do.
I'm flexible, so it's actually, it's.
Me, too.
I, I have a meeting next Wednesday, and I'm busy Tuesday morning, and tomorrow morning.
Can you do Friday morning?
Uh, probably. I don't know, what's, what's today?
Today's 17th. It's the 19th.
Yeah, Friday morning would work for me.
Could you do Friday morning?
Yep.
Sorry, Ariana? Yeah.
Did she give a yes, or?
We need to, uh, unfortunately, I am not expected back before next Wednesday.
Okay.
So, if I need to come back, you need to tell me that.
We only need three signatures, it's just a matter of if you want your signature to be on the warning.
I really do, but
Do you have?
I'm not sure that's going to be possible, unless we can FedEx, which I would pay for, but.
Do you have a way for me to scan an email and you scan back?
Oh, absolutely, 100%.
Well, so then why don't we do that? Why don't I scan it, you sign it, it comes back to me, and, uh, yeah, it, it, it's fine if all these signatures originals are not on one, it's fine.
As long as you have, as long as you have sufficient, then if we can figure out a way that I can also put my name on it, I would appreciate that. And if we don't have a sufficient number, I will find a way to come back.
No, I think I've got the three sitting here that can come Friday morning. They'll sign, I'll scan to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Friday morning, what time?
What time do you want to do Friday morning?
Eight?
Oh.
It's fine, no, I can do it.
I forgot that was the middle of the night for you.
Exactly.
That's the middle of the day for the rest of us.
It's because I'm usually up till midnight working.
What time's good for you?
What time is good for me? Uh.
I could do eight, seriously, I can.
Nine, about 9:30 is the time I can be down. It takes me about, it takes me an hour to do stuff in the barn if it hasn't broken.
9:30.
9:30.
I'll definitely be awake by 9:30.
9:30 is okay.
All right, so 9:30.
9:30.
Okay.
Okay.
All set with the town warning.
Excuse me.
Everyone's happy, I think, and it's like, yeah, how about it?
General fund budget and capital bond expense plan. Julie, you did a little tweaking to it to bring it down from 9% down to 7%, I believe.
We did. I, so the changes that I have made, uh, for your consideration, um, the one that I'm very confident with is, um, taking half of the principal payment that would be to the bond this year, remember, that's 176,000. So taking half of that from ARPA this year, so that it's a step into it, so uh, the increase to the budget would be 88,000 this year. The increase to the general fund budget in 2025 would then be the full 176, but it's a phased approach.
Yeah, be another 88,000.
And so it would be 88,000 this year coming from ARPA. Um, and we had discussed that the last time. Um, there is the possibility of asking trustee of public funds for 16,000 for the mower for the cemetery. Um, I have added that to the trustees' meeting, which is next week, I'm hoping some of you can attend that. Um, I know Arnie is planning on it, um, to, to, and we can request those funds then. Um, worst-case scenario, if they say no, and it ends up in a, you know, they absolutely won't give it, then, uh, those funds could come from capital. There is, they, they could come from the capital fund ballots. Um, the other thing is the one I, I really don't know that I'm settled on, um, but it is an, it is an idea, um, is the clapper valve for the library. So, the library fund has about 290,000 dollars of it. Of that 290, one, about 168, is their wealth management fund. And about 25 is, these are very rough numbers, are their, is their money market. So those are their savings accounts that came to them from bequests. Um, we, we can't touch that, we can't touch those monies, and we don't want to, that's their money. Um, the remaining amount of roughly 98,000 has been, it's an accumulated fund balance over many years of underspent budgets. So, 22 and 23 is the two years that they haven't been able to do fundraising for just turmoil amongst the trustees, right? So, um, those, both of those years showed a, um, you know, a negative, they had a deficit. And that drew from their fund balance, that's where it comes from. Not their wealth management fund, it comes from their accumulated general fund contribution fund balance. So, and again, I, I put this to you guys to discuss, um, you know, 10,000 could come from that for the clapper valve. Is it, is 10,000 worth the discussion? I don't know. I just, I just put it out there as I was looking through all the other funds that are available, this was one that was like, okay, maybe.
Right.
Um, I don't know that I'm 100% comfortable with it, so.
I don't know if we have the right to touch it, though, do we?
Well, that's where I've kind of gone back and forth, Peter.
Yeah.
Um, it is, it, there is a question of, well, so, one thing, it's general fund, it's a general fund contribution to the library, so it's, it's initiation is general funds.
Right.
Um, but, and this is why I'm a little uncomfortable.
Yep.
It, it is money that the general fund makes a contribution to the library. At that point, is it out of us? And there's definitely an argument that it's away from us at this point, we've made the contribution. So, um, again, I, I maybe shouldn't have even thrown it out there as an option, but I said I would look at all funds and give you any options that were available. It's not the one that I am like, I'm confident in this.
Okay.
I'm leaving this to you guys to decide what you want to do with it.
I'm abstaining from the library, but I have, uh, went through it, and I kind of have a slightly different take on it, it doesn't quite do. I just paying 88,000, I wanted to get something for real for the ARPA funds, and just using it to pay interest doesn't excite me, although this is more kind of that. I would, um, I'd return the other 47,000 in the surplus money. Put that into the, put that back into the budget.
47,000 of surplus money.
Right, you had, you took out in the highway fund.
Oh, those two, yep.
Yep, yep, but then, so you have 47 left there, right? If, if you, you were saving 47 out of that, that you weren't, that you, of the surplus, you put 58 in, there's a total, so you're holding actually some of the surplus back.
Yes.
For the highway.
For the highway, right, so I would put that 47 back in.
I'm sorry, the highway, I, I'm sorry, Peter, I was thinking capital fund.
Yep.
Okay, so the hi- yes.
In the highway, right, okay.
So take all of the highway surplus and, to the 25, to the 24 budget.
Right, I would, I would take ARPA funds for the firehouse window, because then I'm going to get something for it. This is more, when you get to think about those kind of semantics, because you could just throw the money at it. And I would do 10,000 from the ARPA fund for the library, because that's a fight that I really don't think we're going to win. But I would stipulate now that if they have a surplus in the library, it's returned to the general fund. From now on, it's, so you don't have this battle, if there's a surplus from now on, it returns to the general fund. So that, so that leaves, just paying interest with ARPA, I just want to hold something.
It's a principal payment, it's not an interest payment, it's a principal.
But I want, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I get, I get where you're, I get it, I get it.
Well, part of it is that discussion with the library about that, the surplus funds, of money that we've already given them, or spending the money on that clapper valve, that's a discussion I think we should have with them, to make sure that we're all on, on board, as, as opposed to doing anything with that, that fund at this point. When they were here giving the presentation, maybe that would have been the time, I think, to have the discussion, whether to see if it was an option, to see how it works, to see, because I'm not that comfortable either, I'm not exactly sure how it works, once we donate money to the, not donate, but once we allocate money to the library, what are the guidelines as far as claiming some of it back, because it's surplus? I, we've never done that, and I'm not sure if we can, I don't know the process on that.
Well, I, I, sorry, you done?
No, but.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to talk about the highway budget, so.
Okay, yeah, but this is, yeah, relative to the library, I, I agree with Peter, that I don't think this is something that we do with the, that 97,000, because we've already given that to them. But moving forward, I think if they don't spend it, they don't get it. And so, the 10,000, it's our building as a town, we should be responsible for upkeep of the building, so I'm not necessarily advocating that we take 10,000 out of their money to, to pay for that, I mean, I would love to, but on the other hand, I, I agree with Peter that if we're giving them in this year 101,000, and they spend 98,000 of it, the rest of it comes back to the general budget. Or it doesn't go out of the general fund. It, it, you know, we don't pay it out. It, it, you know, we don't pay it out. I I don't know how that works, but I I am in agreement that I don't think that the taxpayer means for the library to accumulate a small fortune because they didn't spend their budget.
I don't think it's a small fortune. I still would think about the process about, once we do allocate the money, whether there is even a way for it to come back.
Well, I think we need to.
Now, Matt Gorski's with us. He's on the, on the committee for the library. Matt, I see your hand up. Will you want to chime in on this?
Yeah, I I just wanted to say, I can't speak for the entire board of trustees. But I can say, if this is something that would be useful to do, we can definitely put it on the agenda for next month's meeting. To see if we as a board of trustees mind using that extra unspent money from years previous to cover this cost.
That's, that would be very helpful, Matt. That's a good option.
Yeah. You know, again, I'm not trying to poke at the library. I'm just trying to look at the taxpayer.
Well, and that's why I looked at all the funds. I looked at all the funds to to see what can we pull, like, what can we use?
Yeah, and we as a board of trustees are certainly willing to work with the select board in whatever way we can.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. So that one, we could just.
So.
Because that's not going to happen in time.
That will not happen in time. I can pull the ten from ARPA.
Right.
I can slate that for ARPA, so leaving it out of the budget, pending this discussion.
Now, what you were talking about, the highway surplus, the fact that there was still forty-seven thousand left. I'm not too sure that drawing that down to zero is a good idea, because some of the expenses that we incurred in December from the last flood are just coming due. And if it's not declared any disaster, and there's no state money and stuff, we might be holding the bill for two hundred thousand or something.
I was, yeah, I was just kind of leaving us a little cushion. That's what I was trying to do.
Because there is some unknowns that are happening because of the weather events that we've been having. And to draw it down without having that cushion, I think it's, I would, I'd rather see it as a cushion for future use. And it has to stay in highway anyways, I thought. I didn't think we could take it back. It has to stay in the highway.
But whatever you accept in that surplus does redo, it ends up.
It reduces the highway budget, yes.
It goes around.
It goes off.
Right. I don't, see, I always look at a surplus should be returned to the taxpayer, see. You are, I mean, realize that we're, we're getting, we're getting the funds because of the way the flood worked out, that we're not claiming. So it's kind of not really a surplus because of the game that's played with the flood. But when you, you say surplus to me, that means that the guy who paid that in should get some back. If I went and paid for something and you said, well, you paid too much, but it's all right, I'm going to keep it, it would bother you.
Well, and 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 that, that'll bring the discussion on our fund balance, that we try to get up to four or five hundred thousand to have a cushion on the town finances and stuff. So if you don't want to have any surplus at all, by rights, you could almost argue that that, that fund balance should be at zero every year.
Well, you have, you have the fund balance there, but you're not building it up, you know?
It's the same, it's a surplus. It's basically the same.
We're supposed to have about four hundred thousand.
And what do we have now?
We do not at this point.
I think we do not.
Because twenty-twenty-two, we drew from that. Twenty-twenty-three ended with a little bit of a, of a deficit. You know, we're going to be pulling from that. You know, I think our fund balance is, you know, about a hundred and thirty at this point.
A hundred and thirty, so. So it'd show it's anywhere other than, well, see, then it shouldn't show up, the surplus shouldn't be in highway. You should be transferring it out.
You can't. Highway's her surplus, has to stay in highway.
Right. Well, then the highway surplus doesn't go into the fund, the five hundred thousand you need for rainy day fund, is what you're saying then, too.
No, the highway surplus will stay there so that next year, if highway all of a sudden overspends.
Does, yeah, all, no, you have, you need five hundred thousand in an account, right? That's what you're saying.
About four hundred, yeah.
You need about four hundred.
Yeah.
But highway is a separate account from that.
Correct, correct. Highway's not included within that.
Highway's not included within that.
That fund balance was a recommendation by the auditors. In case of things that could happen or just for cash flow and stuff. And it actually helps in the long run, because it, it, it keeps our tan notes down and the interest and stuff that we have to pay on that kind of.
And our fund balance is not a healthy fund balance, what we have right now. It's not a healthy fund balance.
And the highway surplus, if if next year at budget time, we we look at it, we say, wow, we got a hundred and fifty thousand surplus this year. Then you could say, well, that forty-five, it doesn't go away. If it's going to, if it's going to still be there, it'll still be there next year, and it still could be returned.
Yeah.
It's part of the, it stays in that.
But you would do.
And typically, that's what we do. Typically, that is what we do. I'm only holding, I was only recommending holding a little bit back. Because.
Yeah, you're paying.
Because of how we created the surplus to begin with.
Yep.
And there's a lot of unknowns there.
Yep.
So are we going to get reimbursed everything? Yeah, we should. And right now, there, we've made, the state has made the application. Looks like we're going to get ten percent, or ninety percent FEMA reimbursement. But that hasn't been signed off by the president yet. And there's some other language coming out that talks about, you know, reducing the ten. And if that all happens, then we'll make out. Like we did in Irene. But if it doesn't happen.
Yep.
We're going to have a match. And then where does that end up leaving us as it all shivers off? And I'm not going to know that until FEMA reimbursement money starts flowing, which we did receive our first payment, forty-two hundred dollars. First, the first payment came in.
Was that the coffee bill?
Since July, the first payment has been received. That was one project. We have eighty-seven. So that's the other reason, right? So it's, yeah, anyway. So that's, that was my only suggestion. You don't have to. You can give it all back and re, and just deal with next year, next year. That's entirely.
Well, you're, you're still going to have, because even if you gave it all back, you're still going to have the ARPA money there. Because that's, that goes, this kind of just plays this game where it just offsets against ARPA.
So the, the one thing that's going to just be thinking about ARPA, the thing with ARPA is you have to, you have to determine in twenty-twenty-four how those funds are going to be used. Our, our, our time is coming. Those are going to be discussions we have very soon. So we won't be in reserve for twenty-five, because we will have already allocated what we're doing with it.
Yeah.
Spent by twenty-five or six.
Spent by twenty-six.
Right, oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it brings the budget down, and we're down from nine to seven with those ideas, and hopefully the trustees of public funds will be kind.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question?
Sure, sure, Ariana.
I've been paying attention and making notes, but your recommendation, is the Yosemite windows coming from ARPA? Something we've, we've all said we love that idea? We're still talking about that idea? Is that out there?
I made the recommendation. It is out there, Ariana. You guys can certainly make that choice. The only reason that I did not take it out of the budget is sitting in the general fund budget right now, under historic facility maintenance. The only reason I didn't take it out, because I felt like it was kind of a shell game. Well, that's not the right term. You're going to take it out this year, but we have so many historic facilities, that something's going to get put in that line next year. So if you take thirty thousand out and make that zero, you're just increasing your budget thirty thousand dollars next year, right out the gate. That is certainly a decision you guys can make. I've just tried to pull items that I know really are one-time things, that are not just going to bite us in the butt next year. So that, but that, that is your choice, if you guys want to.
So when we, so when we look at, okay, historic buildings, which I would have to find the page.
Peter, can I ask one more question before you jump in?
No, I'm hunting.
Julie, what are we saying is taken out of our proposed budget because we will use ARPA funds? Or have we, have we all just had this conversation and we have not agreed to take anything out of the budget using ARPA?
My purpose, my, this budget that you guys have in front of you is proposing eighty-eight thousand come from ARPA funds for fifty percent of the principal payment on the EMS building. And I think you guys have said the ten thousand for the clapper valve for the library comes out of ARPA funds. Those are the only two things, which is not only, they total ninety-eight thousand dollars if you use them, comes from ARPA funds.
Do we all agree on that, or are we going to talk about it another time? That's why I'm confused.
Now, we, I, I think we should decide at this meeting, pretty much, on where we want this budget to sit, where all the monies are coming from. So the, the discussion is for now, and the decision is for now. We, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and we can move on to other stuff, but we'll come back to a definitive question. Do we do the eighty-eight from ARPA? Do we do the ten? Or have we all said we will? That's my question.
So if we take the ten thousand for the clapper valve, and then the library trustees agree that we can use their money for that, does, how does that work?
So, so if you, if you say, I'm sorry, if you say the ten thousand is coming from ARPA?
Well, that's where it's coming from now, right?
Correct. So if you want to leave it in the budget, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're, if we're taking that ten thousand, or paying that ten thousand dollar clapper valve from using ARPA funds. And then the library trustees agree within the next week or two that they're going to pay for it out of their funds. Then have we made a commitment for that, or are we just, it's like?
No, because, because that doesn't get voted.
Okay.
That's not within your budget. So you're, basically what you're setting tonight is you're saying, that ten thousand, we're not going to put in the general fund budget that we're voting tonight. You're telling me we're going to take it out of.
Oh, right, because if we're going to do something from ARPA, we don't have to declare that now.
Correct.
We just have to say it's not in the budget. We'll deal with it later. We think we'll deal with it with ARPA.
Correct.
Right. I, I think that that makes sense, then.
Thank you, sorry.
That allows us to make a decision tonight, and then if the library decides that they can chip in, that'd be great.
Correct, correct.
So the eighty-eight from, for ARPA, the ten for the clapper valve from ARPA, and hopefully the public funds for the sixteen. And that'll bring us to where we are.
Are you comfortable with the full eighty-eight coming from ARPA? Or do you want to follow Peter's suggestion and have the whole highway surplus be reflected in the budget?
I'm leaning, I, I personally am leaning to leaving the surplus in the highway, because that'll, that could always come out next year if it has to. Whereas if we do it the other way around, it's, there is, there is no coming back from it. If there is a deficit in that area, or the expenses rise up in the highway department.
But you're going to jump, you're going to jump the bond payment. I mean, okay, so you're going to get jumped in two thousand and five.
Right. You're going to, you're going to have an eighty-eight thousand dollar increase for the bond this year.
Right.
And next year, you're going to have an eighty-eight thousand dollar increase.
Pick up the other eighty-eight thousand, right?
Correct. It's just dividing, it's just splitting it. You're welcome to give it to the voters as one fell swoop. It was just a way to try to.
They kind of voted the thing in one fell swoop. That's the kind of death-defying act.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and we knew that the, this year or next year, we're going to be killers, yeah.
Everybody knew. You know, what was not anticipated is that there would also be the inflation rates, and what we're seeing in the economy was not anticipated, but that's the risk you take when you borrow big money.
Right. Well, there's not a flexible interest rate on the bond, right?
No. However, if they were to drop, this is, this, I forget the interest rate, but it would re, they would refinance the bond if it drops below a certain percentage, but. This is already pretty low. That's not going to happen.
Well, that's what I mean. You kind of, you, you voted it. You knew you were going to get it. You spend the ARPA money, makes it look better, but you're still, just get hit in the back of the head with it.
Oh, absolutely. It's just, it's just phasing it.
Right.
That's all it's doing.
It, it's going.
I think, I, I would say it's doing more than that. It's providing relief for the tax, a little bit of relief for the taxpayers in this fiscal year.
Yeah, it's phasing it. Phasing the payment. Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to be presenting another jump next year with some items that we have no control over, because they're, they're obligations that we already have. And they're going to, they're, they're coming up again. And I'm, I'm just worried about the highway department because of the way the weather's been and reimbursement from the feds and from the state. If it all doesn't fall into place exactly, we're on the hook for up to, up to ten percent, up to twenty-five percent. Usually it's more like ten percent, but there's a chance. Irene, we broke out, we didn't make out, we just about broke even on that, which was kind of fair, considering in time contribution that the town had to do for all those finances. So it actually did what it was supposed to do, and it worked, and they paid for a majority of the damages that happened because of that. Whether it's going to happen again, as smooth as it did last time, which involved a lot of hard work and bookkeeping and pictures and notes and everything else to get two hundred dollars. Hopefully, there'll be a little more coming again, but, but the feds, I kind of wonder sometimes, but you never know. And having that little bit of a cushion for an extra year, it's not, we're not keeping it. We don't have to. We could always turn around next year and say, you're right, we've got even a bigger surplus this year. Let's, let's, let's put it back, you know, into the general, the well, you just decrease the highway budget. Which decreases our general, the general fund budget, because you can't return it, but you can reduce the budget. There always will be a way to do that. That's my fault.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Shereen Slavinsky. Just, I know you guys are talking about the budget and it increasing, it got wet from nine to seven. Is that just the general fund, and is there an additional addition for the education that also will probably be increased by the state?
So this is just the municipal budget. We have nothing to do with the education budget. That is not set by the town.
So that's set by the state, and, and that will be an additional increase on top of this?
Yes. The education, whatever that ends up being, yes, that's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have no control over that.
Which is usually, what, two-thirds of people's taxes?
No, two-thirds of people's taxes is the education.
One-third is municipal, around two-thirds is educational.
Yep. Yep.
Any other questions or concerns, or how do you want to deal with the recommendations?
I, I'm happy with the recommendation as presented. I, at this point, I guess the only change might be the library paying for the clapper valve instead of the taxpayer. Or the taxpayer pays for it one way or the other. It's whether it's.
Whether it comes from the library or from our.
Directly from their wallet, yeah.
Well, you also have to get, the public funds have to agree to buy the lawnmower.
But if they don't, that could come from capital, and therefore it's not going to affect your general fund.
I would, I would hope that they, they would be a positive response from that, because one of their big funds was basically for the maintenance of lot, of cemeteries. And plot, I mean, they, you know, it's spelled out, so it's hard to refute something that was part of the bequest when the money was first originally given to the town. It, it's an actual, yeah, this makes sense. So hopefully, they'll be okay with it.
That's why it'd be nice to have one or two or.
Just to speak towards it, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I won't be available.
I'll be kicking around.
Good, just having a couple of you there would be helpful.
Anything else? So are we okay with the numbers and the amounts and where they're coming from? Any other questions or concerns about it? And so we'll be having another meeting Friday morning at nine.
So are you setting this Friday? Are you setting this tonight?
I think we're ready to set it.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so if you're ready to set it, we need a motion.
And we set it for the.
To raise a really big hammer.
The number that we're looking to raise is the three-nine-five-five-zero-six-three.
Three-nine.
Three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand and sixty-three dollars.
It should be three-nine-seven-five.
Thirty-nine, seventy-five, seven-eighty-three, point seven-one.
I'm sorry. Here, this one. That's your number.
You scared me when you circled the five thousand.
Sorry.
Five million one. So we need a motion to approve our general fund budget to raise the amount of three million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
You know, I got seventy-one cents in my pocket. Can we just round that?
Would you like to do thirty-nine, seventy-five, seven-eighty-three?
I would. I'll have the rest on Friday. Or you could pony up a quarter.
I will just increase something by the, by the change, so that it.
Sorry, it just, it, it always bugs me, we're, we're voting on. Sorry, it just, it, it always bugs me, we're voting on pennies.
Precise numbers, I understand.
I'm just reading the numbers here.
Yeah, no, I, I've just...
So we're going up to 72, or 84?
Just go to 84.
And zeros.
And zeros.
I will punch a number somewhere else.
Somebody make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Lee's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on this? Two months of your time to finally get to this point where the budget is complete. It's been a lot of work, a lot of numbers. I think we've done a, a, a good job of trying to find where it was possible to not spend as much as we usually do, but it's, it's hard to do in these times, the way what the expenses, everything are. There's nothing in this budget that I see that is frivolous or extra. And it takes a lot of money, it seems, to provide the services that we do as a town. Anybody else, any other discussions?
Well, I think it's important to note that we have a lot of services in this town. You know, we're, we're a town that has a lot of services, which drives people to our town, but that all costs money.
All those in favor of approving the budget as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Ariana?
Aye.
All, anybody opposed? Nobody. Budget is set, passed. There's still a bunch of stuff on the list. Tobacco license for the Jiffy Mart.
Is this just a signature, do we need the...
No signature, you just have to vote to approve, or vote to accept it.
I'm making a motion to approve the tobacco license application for the Jiffy Mart. Second?
Lee's the motion, and Peter's the second. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? All, all yeses. New business, future agenda items.
I do have one thing. I just, I, tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, is it next week? One day, this week, I have, Friday, a presentation, I've been asked to speak with these, this collaborative funding group workshop. So, and, and the purpose is speaking about impacts of the flooding in Chester. The group that I'm speaking to is a collaborative of funding sources across the state, and apparently some federal organizations as well. And what they are trying to do is determine what the needs are of different sectors of people, of towns most impacted by the flooding. So they've already met with Waterbury, Montpelier, and Berry, they had their first session with them. So now they're hearing about, you know, what, what smaller towns are that were affected, and hurdles that were, that we, that we're facing, challenges we're facing, funding, you know, what was the funding, what are our issues with funding. So I had emailed you guys, you know, I plan to talk about the impacts to roads, bridges, water, wastewater, the dam. I'm going to talk about the environmental hurdles with the debris removal, that's been a nightmare. I'm going to talk about the prior resiliency work, and some of the stuff that we definitely will be doing in our neck, in years to come. We're going to talk, I'm going to talk about the command structure and communicating the community aspect of an event is something. And then Peter mentioned, which is great, to talk about, you know, one great thing would be to have, like, real hydrogeol, hydrogeologic studies of the branches of the Williams River in the floodplain.
Right.
To figure out what are the causes, and, and how, how can there be work done in the rivers that could help lessen. Are there other topics or anything specific you want me to mention?
It's more, more the floodplains than the river.
Yep.
That's the, because the flood, getting the floodplains fixed so they actually function, that's the harder part.
Okay.
Anybody can dig out a river, but the whole object is you want the floodplains to function as a storage area.
We've got three rivers coming into town, and this is basically converging in town, it's...
Right, so you want to go above the town and make sure all the floodplains are not blocked off, or what you can do, it's, it's the study they did in Waterbury, there's one section of one place that if they lowered it three feet, it would lower the water in the center of town by something like four feet. You know?
Yeah.
So you start looking, looking that way, because one of the traps that I think we get into is we look at the railroad bridge down here, and you say, wow, if the railroad bridge, it would be bigger, it'd be great. I look at the railroad bridge being bigger, and I say, gee, you just washed away the sewer plant.
Yeah.
You know, so you want to go way upstream and say, you know, what, what's going on here, and maybe there was more water storage by facilitating floodplains, so it slows before it gets here.
So making floodplains, almost, it sounds like, because if you're taking three feet of soil away...
Well, that's, that's what, that's the example in Waterbury, but see, we might find places that were dyked up years ago, or you're not supposed to in any way, which I totally understand why, why a residential homeowner will do it if his house is put in a floodplain. But if you have a field, an agricultural field, I have two, they've been flooded both times, and it's, you know, that's the way it goes. I have fields that are in the floodplain. But if you're diking, diking it up, that's illegal on the state plan, and that's illegal, should be, zoning violation. You know, but I wouldn't go picking on the homeowners for that.
Well, the state doesn't, it's not a zoning violation, because the state takes that right away from us. So that is a state issue.
No, it is, no, it's, it's a zoning violation by the town unless it's agricultural land.
And then the state.
Then it's the state.
Right.
So the other concern is dead wood logs, because you cause a jam, and it causes the flood to go somewhere it doesn't want to go.
Exactly.
And so that, the Scott, is that his name?
Yep.
The guy, which I'm still waiting for his number to show up.
Sorry.
That's okay. You get a lot on your plate. But those are the types of questions that really need to be answered, is if we don't take care of these things, we're going to make things worse for the next flood.
And that goes, that's, that's over Scott's head. That is, that is A and R, as a rule.
Right. I understand, I'm not trying to...
But it's a drug to bring up here.
Yeah, I'm not trying to pick on Scott, I am trying to push this back in the lap of the, of the bureaucrats, because they're the ones who are making the laws that we have to obey, or they take the money away, and it puts us in a difficult situation.
Yeah, I'll mention that in my debris discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other items for future agendas?
Any update on the solar field?
Oh. I have an answer for you.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the transformer. It has absolutely everything to do with the hydro that's on the Black River. Because if you're Green Mountain, you want to sell the power when you generate it for the closest meter. That is us in Springfield. If it goes the other way, it just goes on to the, to the big Velco grid, and you don't make as much money on it. So if we put more solar generation in here, we're going to offset their revenue from their hy, from their hydro dam.
Hmm. Interesting, that's not...
It's a curse, it's a curse of, of my brain in tracing things back, that that...
But that, yeah, that's not what I heard from, I can't remember the guy's name, but I called him and said, what's the deal? He said, the transformer's undersized, so...
And they don't want to change it.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you want to change it? Because you want to use the revenue from your dam. That's why, see, my, my answer to the solar field is, we have to propose a solar field, and we have to force their hand. We have to...
I will tell you, I'm speaking about solar, so I have reached back out to Mike to see if he needed anything further from me. I haven't heard back from that. But the other thing I did learn is that the Bond Bank, again, has a program that, oh, he gave me the deadline, the timeline to, coming up, anyway, it's for green energy projects, municipal green energy projects, interest rates of one and a half percent.
Wow, that's what I mean, see, you got to, we got to force their hand and say, we're going to do it.
And I did ask the Bond Bank, I asked Mike Gorgon if that money could be used to purchase, I explained our situation, said, do I have to be building one, or can I buy one that's already existing? And he said, no, I think you could buy one that's already existing with the same program.
Good.
So...
That sounds good.
Did you reach out and ask them about fixing that fence?
I have a few times, I'm sure they're waiting to see if we're going to buy it first.
Well, if they would let us know.
The Public Service Board is really receptive, because I've had trouble with just VTAL when they're building the internet. Send a note to the Public Service Board, and then the Public Service Board, you know, we're afraid that children are going to get in here and get electrocuted. This is one of your conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a requirement by code.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Right.
Put it out there, it's water.
Yeah, the, the flood...
Knock it out.
Yeah. And there's a whole bunch of leaves stuck on the downstream side of it, where it's just, you know, you could see how, yeah.
We're allowed to remove the leaves, or no?
It's not our fence.
Not our fence.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's their responsibility to keep it to code. You want to sell a thousand, the condition that is, at a discount? Well, I won't feel bad about that.
That's true.
By the way, fix the fence.
You can reduce it by $100,000.
If we do buy it, we can get a bunch of goats in there to clean the leaves.
That's exactly right.
Well, you might use that for all sale.
I would be doing that anyway.
Brush the snow off.
So that's what I had for new business.
Anybody else have anything they want to see on future agenda items? Next item, executive session regarding our town manager contract.
Are we making a motion to go into executive session? So I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a contract.
For our town manager. Lee's the motion, is there a second?
I can second.
Peter's the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All good. Are we inviting Julian?